He actually heard you.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall? Councilmember Woodall? City Manager Knob?
Here.
Chief of Police Conder?
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham?
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell? Water Superintendent Jensen?
Here.
Wastewater Superintendent Taylor?
Here.
And City Clerk Dunham is present. Thank you.
And I'm here also, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, um, we, um, we came up, we had a closed session, we came out of closed session, we have nothing to report on at this time. And now I will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended or not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any hands raised or emails?
There are currently no hands raised.
And there are no emails received.
Thank you. And we will move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that council would like to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none? Are there any items from the consent calendar that there is an email, a hand raised, or staff would like to remove from the consent calendar?
There are still currently no hands raised.
Thank you.
And no emails.
Thank you. And hearing nothing from staff, I will then ask for a motion to accept the consent calendar.
So moved by Johnson.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second, I would all.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garts?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now we move to reports and staff communications. Page twenty-two in your packet. City manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garts and members of the council. So, just an FYI on Thursday, this Thursday, May twentieth at six thirty PM, Senator McGuire will be hosting an emergency drought town hall. The watersheds across California are being parched, snow packs are at low levels, and there are low amounts of storage in various reservoirs across Northern California. So, Senator McGuire is hoping that folks will join the town hall this Thursday, excuse me, to discuss the drought emergency and see how other agencies across Northern California are responding to this particular crisis. So folks will be able to watch the town hall at the Senate's website, at senate.ca.gov. There's a video portal for for folks to watch. They can also dial in at one six six nine nine hundred six eight three three. And the session should be about an hour long, is my understanding. So that is a situation we are watching develop, and staff will be also watching that particular meeting just to get an update and a briefing on kind of where regionally the other agencies are at in terms of drought response. We did also, in an unrelated subject, we did meet with a pavement contractor, S.T. Rhodes, who was our bidder for the 2021 Riodell Street Improvements project. That project is set to begin tentatively on June first of this year, and the contractor has also tentatively identified a completion date on July ninth. So the first phase of this will be doing some of the prep work in terms of drainage and setting the pave, a project up, and then towards the end of June and early July will be the pavement work. So that's where we're at right now. And I will return it back to the mayor for any questions or comments to staff.
Thank you. And one thing on here you didn't, didn't mention was that our vaccine clinic was a success. And just for anyone who's listening who was not, doesn't have the agenda in front of them, because it was very important. We had, the DHS brought one hundred and seventy-nine vaccines and they, they gave out one hundred and seventy-nine vaccines. So that was really, really good. But anyway, I will now move on to Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Do you have any questions?
Um, thank you, Mayor Garts. I guess the chief would place his comment in our basket, or, or we would get him next meeting.
It is my intention to include them in a five-week period as opposed to a two-week period in the next meeting.
Thank you. That's all.
I mean, thank you. Jeff, did you mean to say you were going to provide the past five weeks?
So, for next week's meeting, I'll include everything that would apply to that meeting as well as the one that I missed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No, Councilman Johnson asked my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, just a comment. I see the bridge is moving along pretty good. Is there a completion time on that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the, I missed the question.
The, the bridge, the bridge work is handicap access. Is there a completion date?
I believe that they're wrapping it up. I noticed that they started shutting it down. I don't know if they have any follow-up work to do, but it was a relatively straightforward project.
Yeah, it, it, it looks nice. It's like a nice job. I think that's all I have is just that.
Mayor Garts, if I might add.
Oh, absolutely.
They, they still have guardrail to replace on the southbound approach. And they, if they had sufficient funds, they indicated at our earlier meeting that they would do some fencing work. So, but I don't know if there's sufficient funds to do that. But that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, no questions from me at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have no questions at this time. So we will then say thank you and move on to the presentation of the 2021-22 Recommended Budget. Uh, that is page twenty-five in your packet, and I will turn it over to the city manager again.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Garts and members of the council. I am very proud to be able to kick off this budget recommended by the council. I want to thank our staff, principally Cheryl Dillingham for putting together the budget, but all the staff working together to to put this material together for the next year. The city is, is in a, in a great position. Over the past five years, we have had consistent revenue growth in the city. Uh, that consistent revenue growth has also translated into consistent increases in service levels from the city. So, uh, for example, we're at six point two five in the police department. We have a code enforcement code or community services officer in the police department. Uh, we have clerical support in the police department. Those are all things that we didn't have five or six years ago. Uh, those are all in the budget, in a balanced budget operationally. And we're able to contribute funds towards capital projects, very significant outlays, as the council's well aware, of, you know, around a half a million dollars every year for the next four years now to be implementing street projects. So we're doing very well in terms of getting the dollars in and then also translating that to getting the service level for the community increased. So that's very positive news in light of really everything that has been going on nationally, internationally. You know, Riodell has been, been strong and in fact has even been growing. The Department of Finance just recently put out some population numbers and, and you may have seen those in in the news regarding statewide population decline, Humboldt County population decline. I'm really proud to be able to say to the council, to the community, that Riodell, uh, when you look at all the unincorporated area, all of our, our
Oh, we lost you.
Okay, I apologize. For some reason, it automatically muted me without asking. Um, so, year after year, we've had some significant improvements in the city's financial picture, and that continues to happen. And in the context of everything that has been going on in the community or in nationwide, internationally, the city is going very strong, and the evidence of that is in the Department of Finance population reports that were recently put out. They made national statewide news, California's first population decline in its history. Humboldt County also, as a whole, population decline in the unincorporated area in addition to our six friend, friendly cities. Riodell was the only one out of all of them to actually have a population increase over the last year. Um, so that's really, I think, a strong signal of where the city is headed. Um, there's no doubt that there needs to be additional work done to catch the city up on infrastructure issues, everything from water, sewer, streets, recreational facilities, all of those things combined together. There's still a lot of work to do. But the city's in a great position to address those, and I think the, the work that we have been doing over the past several years is really been a strong benefit to this community and, and, and that we're really standing out from the crowd as, as evidenced by the Department of Finance numbers. So with that, I will turn this over to Cheryl Dillingham. I'm gonna pull up the PowerPoint here and operate the PowerPoint. So Cheryl will be giving me pointers on how to correctly do this as we go through it.
Thank you, Kyle. This is because I'm still somewhat technology challenged, so Kyle's doing the slideshow. And you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this starts on page fifty-eight in your packet. Prior to that is all the worksheets and detailed information, which we can answer questions on at the end of the presentation. So, next slide. So this is the first time the city council is seeing the budget. In March, we brought the budget calendar to the council, and then city staff began budget development, which involves working with the department heads, looking at what we need, looking at what we've done, projecting revenues, forecasting salaries, and then we share it with the city manager, and then we get it all ready. And during that time, we also did a priority setting session last council meeting with the council. So now we have the recommended budget before you, and then we will bring it about, bring it back on June first at the next council meeting with any, if there are any revised recommendations, we can talk about it again, and then you could either adopt it at that time, or we can bring it back again on the fifteenth. But normal, or the fiscal year starts on July first, so we need to get the budget adopted by June thirtieth. That is the goal. So, next slide, please. So this is just a very brief table of major budget changes, and I, I had it in different places in the presentation and ended up deciding that putting it at the beginning was the best place, but I will be going over all of this information on this slide as we go through the presentation, but just a real quick some major items that are in here is there's a new administrative analyst position proposed based on input from the last priority setting session. This position would do economic development and project management. It is somewhat offset by a point for reduction in the finance director because that position has become part-time. There's the five hundred and fifty thousand in streets work. This is in addition to the funds that are in the current year budget, and if that project is not finished, we would roll those funds forward into next year's budget. It also includes grant funding for the power resiliency grant of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, and that has had its completion date extended, and so we will be doing that in next year's budget. And then revenues have really done well, partly because we anticipated that they would go down because of COVID, and then they didn't actually go down, so you, so you get a little bit of a, of a double. They didn't go down, and so they kind of grew at what they normally would have grown. Anyways, we'll talk about that more. And other items are the SLES and streets and Measure Z, and I will go on to the next slide. So the total recommended budget is five million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars, and that is an eighteen percent increase from last year, or eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Primarily, this increase is due to capital projects, which increased by six hundred and eighty, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars due to the streets work, Dinsmore water upgrades, and the power resiliency grant. Additionally, there's the new position that we discussed priorly, and overall, public works and police salaries went up slightly because of the compensation study, or a little bit more than slightly enough to impact the budget, seventy-five thousand dollars. And there's also we are, for this upcoming year, because we bought new police vehicles, we have added a vehicle replacement, which means we're over ten years, we will accumulate enough money to, to replace those vehicles at the end of that time, and that's eighteen thousand dollars. And that basically sums up the, the changes. This shows how the budget's distributed with public works having twenty-nine percent of the budget, police. Okay, I can't. Note to self, next time, make it so it's easier to tell which one's which. I think police is twenty, is nineteen percent. What do you think, Kyle? I can't actually.
I'm sorry, police is nineteen, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm reading the screen. Next time I'll put the, I'll, I put the numbers, but I didn't put the percentages.
Administrative services, fifteen percent, capital projects, twenty-four. Debt service and payments, that's nine percent of the budget, and then community development is, rounds it out at four.
Okay, so next slide, please. So this is, this shows the total city expenditures by type, meaning it's broken down into salaries and benefits, debt service, capital projects, and services and supplies. And this is the total over the whole city budget for all funds. And basically, total city salary and benefits went up by two hundred and forty-eight thousand. This includes the new position, the costs of the implementation of the compensation study, and other benef, health insurance went up about five percent, and other items such as that. And then capital projects went up, as discussed earlier, by six hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. But one of the other things that impacted salary costs was that some positions that were vacated have been filled at higher steps. Next slide. Okay, so this, now we're talking about general fund expenditures. So this shows that the police budget for the general fund portion of the police budget, it is nine hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The remainder is picked up by the SLESF fund. Capital projects are six hundred and fifty-five thousand, city manager, finance, it's all detailed there. It shows you that police is the largest expenditure with capital projects coming in second, and city manager believed coming in third. And the reason the city manager budget went up is because the new administrative, proposed administrative analyst position is in that budget at this time.
We should also just clarify, the city manager's budget also includes city clerk and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a lot of other activities go on in the city manager budget. So the general fund portion of capital projects went up by a hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. General fund expenditures generally increased by sixteen percent, or about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. We, we increased funding for facilities and grounds, including, so as part of the budget process, we look at how staff in public works is allocated to different activities, and we did a little adjusting this year, and there was a little more staff allocated to facilities and grounds, and there was additional money allocated for actual materials and, um, work to be done to maintain facilities. And then the police salaries and benefits, as we had discussed early. So we can go to the next slide. And this shows city revenues by fund. No. Yeah, that is correct. That's by, so, sorry, we went from general fund to all the funds. So now we're looking at overall city revenues, and they're estimated to be five million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars, compared to four million, seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eight, which is an increase of one million, sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, or twenty-six percent. That increase is primarily due to the two hundred and ninety-five thousand in grant funding, items in the general fund, which I will discuss on the next slide, a hundred and eighty-two thousand in increased sewer and water charges. This is really, again, a a magnification because we estimated them going down, and they didn't go down, and now we're putting them back where they were before. I will say there is a piece in there because we record those revenues as revenues, and there's an accounts receivable portion that has to do with outstanding bills that we, anyways, I'm not going to go into too much detail into that, but at this point, I'm not considering it to be a significant impact to the budget, and we're, the state and the feds are both providing funding to help with back utility charges before the water shut-off option is re-implemented. We've created a payment plan where people can come in and pay their bills back over time, and anticipation is that we will receive all of that revenue and won't have to write very much of it off. It'll just take a little while. And then gas taxes are actually estimated to go up by twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. They had taken a big hit, and so this is helpful, and hopefully we can look at the state working to figure out how to better fund our streets, because at this point, Riodell is relying on our, our general fund and our tax base to take care of it. So, next slide. So the general fund revenues went up by forty-four percent, which is a big number, and surprised me, but, and I double-checked it and went back and looked at it, and it's primarily the sales tax, which the twenty percent and fifteen percent are, are Measure J sales tax and our sales tax. And so those two together make up thirty-five percent. Sales tax makes up thirty-five percent of the city's revenue. And part of what Kyle and I discussing it think may have happened with COVID is that people were doing online purchasing, and online purchasing actually results in those sales taxes coming to the city versus if they go into Eureka and buy stuff, then Eureka gets that sales tax money. And then cannabis revenues have gone, are now twenty-four percent of the budget, and they increased. Anyways, they went, they increased substantially, and those are the two items that cause the, this revenues to get, go up by four hundred and forty, five hundred and forty-five thousand. Additionally, we, we should the, um, the current year tax or sales taxes and cannabis taxes have also gone up significantly over budget for the current year, so that is contributing to our beginning fund balances for next year. So it's, it's not like this is just a giant increase over actual revenues. This is an increase over budgeted revenues, actual, in, actual revenues in the current year are also coming in very well. So one of the other things is these higher revenues have actually resulted in revenues which are subject to the GAN limit being more than allowed. But fortunately, there is an exemption for capital projects, and you can reduce your appropriations for capital projects, and as a result of the street work that we're doing, we are in compliance with the GAN Act, and I will be bringing an item back with more information and more discussion on that GAN limit, how it's calculated, and what that looks like. And, next slide.
I might just have a couple of quick comments to Cheryl. And just the sales tax and cannabis tax, you know, just to bear in mind as we move, you know, forward over the next few years, those, those revenues historically, and when you look at other jurisdictions, are, are pretty volatile, so you can see swings that go up and swings that go down based on the, you know, the economy, based on what we have, which is a relatively small cannabis business base. Um, so, you know, just something to, to keep in mind. And then regarding the GAN limitation, I mean, that's, it's really a good problem to have for the city, which, you know, it just means that we have additional resources to be able to tackle, tackle problems. Uh, but I'll move on to the next slide.
Yeah, I think having revenues above the GAN limit is very unusual, and I think part of it is because of the, the smallness isn't the right word, but Riodell is a small organization, and so things have big impacts on it. So this slide shows the capital projects. There's, this same table is also on page fifty-four of the packet, where it might be a little easier to read, but basically it shows the projects that we have allocated. The asphalt street resurfacing is pretty, you know, self-explanatory. The beautification. The beautification money is to allow for projects throughout the city to help the city look, um, beautiful and help with economic development. City hall improvements are for replacing windows and other, and then things like flagpoles, the police radio upgrade, self-explanatory, city hall planning. I might let Kyle talk about that if he wants to.
Yeah, so I, I'm hoping that USDA Rural Development will reopen some of its, uh, grant applications for this. And we may not necessarily need to utilize city money for this. Uh, but one of the problems that we're encountering as we, you know, uh, add staff or whether it's the, uh, getting the council back into the chambers in a, uh, in a hybrid format, in a, in a safe format that's COVID compliant, um, that we, there are just some very significant deficiencies in the building that make those type of issues, uh, harder to deal with. And so, uh, several years ago, I believe, eight or nine years ago, the city, uh, looked into, uh, the potential of, uh, doing work at city hall and either expanding it or, uh, replacing it or, or some other kind of very conceptual, uh, ideas were tossed around. And then, uh, nothing ended up happening with it. Uh, but we're really running into a capacity issue with the building. Um, it's not undergone any kind of major remodeling since its construction in, I believe, nineteen seventy-four. Um, so the building is largely ADA non-compliant. Uh, the building itself, we did some work on access. So the, the, the front porch is a safer environment for the public to access. Uh, but the interior of the building, it has a lot of different deficiencies. Everything from the days that the council uses, uh, to the bathrooms, um, uh, and whatnot. And we really, you know, I think the city's in a position where it needs to, uh, do some planning, uh, long-range planning for the, the use of the facility itself. Um, you know, and there are, uh, obviously, uh, infinite number of possibilities regarding that. Um, but obviously, if there was any remodeling work, uh, done in, in the facility, we're at one hundred percent capacity. So we don't have overflow space, uh, to move folks while a section of the building is, is renovated. These are kind of problems that we want to start to have a conversation with the council um, and with some, uh, experts to, you know, help us identify the best, most efficient strategy moving forward for this, this public facility that, um, is used, uh, by the public, maybe has different uses that could be applied towards it um, and, and whatnot. And so we want to just, uh, you know, uh, put that on the council's radar and, uh, and try to, you know, begin that conversation about long-term what we do with the, uh, this building. So I'll go, uh, return it back to you, Cheryl.
Okay, so the, there's the replacement of the admin vehicle. And that vehicle has been being used by the police department and is going to stay there. And we're going to replace it. If you know, that is coming out of the admin fund and not the general fund. And that is because over the life of that vehicle, mileage charges have been charged and funds have been accumulated that can be used to replace that vehicle along with some funds that the police department had set aside that we will be using. We have the power resiliency grant equipment, which we've talked about in previous meetings. The wastewater budget, capital budget basically has numerous projects to replace existing equipment. There's really nothing in here that's new. This is all capital replacements and upgrades to existing equipment. The water project has a similar thing. The water meter reading equipment is one that we will probably be bringing back to discuss more because that's a, a change in technology and the, the current equipment has become obsolete. And then there's two projects in there, the monument water line replacement, which is, uh, not kind of your typical, um, equipment replacement. And then the Dinsmore upgrade, which is to help provide infrastructure for, um, increased water capacity in the Dinsmore area. And I don't know if Kyle wants to talk about that at all. And it's all, we also have it on the next slide, too.
Yeah, let's, uh, so we'll be bringing some items, uh, to the council at a later date related to that. Uh, but there are going to need to be some improvements. Uh, that infrastructure is already dated and it needs to be replaced. Um, but as the council's aware and, and has identified as a priority, um, we do have, um, some cannabis-related businesses, uh, businesses that will be utilizing additional water. We have met with, uh, the fire district, uh, to go over the requirements, uh, for fire flows and whatnot. Um, and so there's going to have to be some level of upgrade, uh, to the existing infrastructure. Uh, and so that would be shared by the developers and then also recovered through the, uh, special Dinsmore rate. So the council may recall back in the last, uh, water rate setting process, the, uh, Dinsmore zone, which is basically essentially almost like a separate water zone that's not directly connected to the city's main grid, uh, is carved out of the system and has a, has a separate rate. Um, so Cheryl.
So this slide goes over the priorities and I know the council has not completed that process. So this was basically taking a look at prior year priorities and what's currently in the budget and what information we had from the last meeting about priorities and going through how they're reflected in the recommended budget that's before you today. So it includes the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for street work from the general fund. It continues to fund a community service officer to perform code enforcement and has the ongoing ten thousand dollars for abatement activity in economic development. There is a new administrative allen, analyst position proposed to perform economic development activities. And a drawdown of seventy-seven thousand dollars is budgeted from the Economic Development Fund. This is an increase over what was included in the current year budget. And at this point, it doesn't actually look like any of the funds in the current year budget will be drawn down. So almost the full three hundred thousand that was originally allocated is still available. And then there's thirty-eight thousand dollars, as discussed, when we were looking at capital projects for beautification and revitalization projects in the city. For cannabis, the budget includes the hundred thousand for upgrades to the Dinsmore water system to support cannabis cultivation, which continues to be an additional source of revenues to the city general fund. And then it includes twenty thousand for a labor consultant to start labor negotiations and develop strategies to support, to support staff and encourage retention. And there is ten thousand dollars included for police recruitment, um, options that we could explore. I don't know if Kyle wants to add anything or go on to the next slide.
I know, I think that was good.
Okay, so, so then this is really, I'm not going to go into detail of this, but the purpose of this slide is to go over the, what is ongoing and what is one time to demonstrate that the budget is balanced. So basically, our reoccurring revenue, revenues for the citywide are four point eight million and our reoccurring expenditures are four point one million. So we base, we have one, almost one and a half million in one-time non-reoccurring expenditures in the current budget. And that's a list of them. The budget summary on page twenty-seven of the packet. So I don't, I'm, I'm going to talk about it. I don't think you really need to look at it, but just so you know, kind of, that it's on page twenty-seven. The, the big blue sheet is what we always call that. Goes over the changes in fund balance for each fund. All of the funds have estimated ending balances that exceed the thirty percent reserve target with the exception of the Dinsmore water zone. Okay, now I'm coughing. The intent there is that that fund would go into the negative and then it would be, um, the, when we provided the services, the service charges would then replenish the fund. There is more than adequate funding in the Water Operations Fund to recover this. So it would be a temporary loan. Of all of the funds, the only one that actually has an issue where ongoing costs exceed ongoing revenues is the Sewer Operations Fund. And that is why we're doing a rate study and that RFP is expected to go out Monday, is my thought. And that pretty much sums that slide up. Next slide. And this was, this was from last year's presentation and I just thought I would throw it back in again. It shows the city organization with Public Works being in red, um, the administration finance being in green, chief of police in blue. And it just sort of gives you an idea of how small the staff is for all of the things that we do. And it shows where the new admin analyst position goes, propose, is proposed to go, um, under the city manager next to the city clerk. And then we go to the next slide, which is basically questions. So this would be where if you wanted to go, like, have any questions about the deep. So as part of this packet, starting on page twenty-five is the staff report. And then page twenty-seven is the large sheet that goes through and shows each individual fund down the side and each department across the top. It should, and then it, it shows the reserves, the changes in fund balance, the ending reserves. And then there's a detailed page for each department that shows prior budgets, the current year proposed budget. And then there's also at the very end on page fifty-seven is the position allocation table, which has a change of, what did I say, point? I think that was on slides that I just pushed over. Um, it's like a point eight. We don't have a full position being added because we reduced another position. And then on the, I had it. On page fifty-six, there's position allocations by department. And this is a real detailed spreadsheet that shows each position and what percentage of it is allocated to the different funds. So that, with that, I will turn it over for questions or any closing remarks Kyle wants to make.
No, I think that was, uh, I think that was a excellent presentation. So, um, go ahead and, uh, we'll turn it back to Mayor Garns.
Thank you, um, thank you Cheryl very much. That was a very good presentation. Thanks city manager for throwing in the parts you threw in. It was, that was very helpful as well. Um, uh, so I will now go out to the council, uh, council member Woodall.
Yes, um, I went in this morning, oh my, questions and I talked to Cheryl to get them answered. And, um, but I have just one question on the police budget. I just, um, chief, the proposed overtime salaries for, um, next year, is it nineteen thousand? That, that seems like a quite a, considering that we're fully staffed now. Is there a reason or I'm just not noticing?
So we spend a significant amount of, um, our overtime resources on arranging training for the officers. We pay overtime to have other officers fill in, um, for shifts that are, um, not being covered due to the officers paying away on training. Also because of our size, if we have, uh, a major incident, we've had, uh, a couple of those in the last week. Um, we have to pull in people to assist, uh, search warrants for a good example of that. So there, there is a, unfortunately, a significant amount of overtime that's incurred in the department.
Oh, okay, thank you then, my question. And that's it for me, that, I talked to Cheryl about my other questions this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, council member Wilson.
Yes, just a couple of questions. That was a very good presentation. Answered a lot of the questions I already had. So, one was on the, uh, new anal, the new administration analyst. You have it on the, I think it's page fifty-nine, that is a hundred and fourteen thousand. Is that including benefits? I mean, that's for the year or is that without benefit?
That is fully benefited.
And then what is the?
I was gonna say, it's a, it's a guess because we don't actually have a, a, we're working on it still, so it's an estimate.
Is there a, um, what's the feeling on having this be in a, a position that we hire as a consultant versus, will this be like something that'll have, that'll be a on-time permanent position?
Uh, the idea right now is that it would be a full-time city Rio Del employee.
And, and is that fully, is that fully for economic development?
So it's going to be, it's going to be a mix of things. So, um, really, uh, virtually, everybody in the city holds some sort of role in economic development. And this will certainly be one of their, the primary things we're going to be looking for in a candidate for the position. Uh, but we're also looking for somebody who can do some of the general project management, um, outside of economic development. It could be related to, uh, it could be related to street projects or, um, just other miscellaneous, uh, projects. There's quite a workload in, in terms of just administrative affairs for the city.
Okay, um, on the, on the reduction of the, it's, again, on page fifty-nine, it says the point, point four of a full-time employee was a reduction of fifty-seven thousand. How is, who's going away or what's being reduced there?
That's me.
That's, are you leaving this all together or?
No, I, that's, my position was, has traditionally been budgeted as a full-time, fully benefit position. And up until just recently, I was working, um, as ex, extra help is what we always called it at the county. But, so we have signed a contract and I am now a point six of a permanent position. So we can budget that and I'm, I guess, sticking around for a while. So, so that makes the position a reduced FTE. And part of the, the reason, so that contributes to having another position that does maybe some of the things that this position would do if it was full-time. So maybe at a later point when their staff changes, that, and you have a full-time finance director, they might do more project manager, but, management. But at this point, and also I will say, the states and the feds have got a lot of grant funding coming down the pipeline. And it's really a good time to have a person on staff to help find that money and bring it into the city.
Well, is that part of what the, the, um, this analyst position will do, will be partly a, a grant writer?
Yeah, so we're working on the, uh, the job description right now. And we're going to, uh, be working with Katie Koneko, who, uh, worked on the, uh, compensation study for the council. Um, but, uh, CDBG was one of the items that was highlighted that we need, you know, uh, more assistance with to pull down funding. Uh, generally, that's always tied to either, you know, infrastructure, economic development, um, and, uh, projects like that. So there's just, um, those are really surprisingly time-intensive, uh, projects that really require a lot of follow-up. Um, and so that the position would definitely be assisting in that, uh, avenue along with the current community development director, um, along with the finance director, along with the city manager. So, um, just having another, uh, body on the team to help, uh, administer these, these programs.
But we are still looking to do a finance director?
So, uh, Cheryl has been, uh, hired on as the, of, as the permanent, uh, finance director. This is a unique situation because Cheryl has, uh, a career's worth of knowledge and experience uh, that is frankly, you know, very hard to find. Um, and, you know, would be. Um, and, you know, would be described as a unicorn in most other agencies. And so, uh, she's able to apply, uh, that long history and that, uh, also well-respected history to, uh, solving, you know, the problems and, and is just a lot more efficient in terms of, of getting it, uh, getting work done and financed. So, so we're very lucky to have Cheryl here. Um, it helps finance this, this, uh, needed analyst position.
Yeah, and I, and I very much appreciate Cheryl's, uh, addition to, to the staff. But I'm just getting clear in my head that, so we're not, we reduced her to, to sixty percent, but we're not looking still to add an additional full-time employee as a Finance Director in addition to that.
Correct. If you look on page fifty-seven at the position allocation table, I think that might help clear up.
I saw that we went up one, one person on that, but, but you've reduced.
Yeah, so the, the Finance Director goes from one to point six, and then the administrative analyst gets added. So there's no, at this point, there's, the Finance Director position is stable at point six.
Okay, that, that's, that's, that helps. And I think that, that sounds like a good fit to me the way that, as long as we have someone with, with your experience and competency, it really makes a difference. Uh, my other final question, I think, runs around the idea that we're, uh, looks like we're increasing our, uh, I don't know if it's our capital expenditure, but our overall expenditure by about a million dollars a year, which includes a half million of it that is, appears to be on the streets. Is the estimated revenue income, I, I think I heard you say that with the cannabis and all, was gonna, was gonna cover that? Increase?
So the there's definitely fund balance being used. So if you look at the big blue sheet, the, we're using slightly over five hundred thousand dollars in fund balance. So the ongoing revenues are not sufficient to do this. The capital projects are using fund balance, but the reserves are more than adequate to pay for that activity at this time.
So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, and I, and it's what I kind of saw in this, we're gonna, we're gonna spend about two million dollars in the next four years for the, for the, just for the streets. And so we're, we're gonna draw down some reserves in order to do that because we're not gonna be able to, we're not bringing in that much more revenue to cover all that. We're gonna have to move it around through the reserves, when you say fund balancing?
Correct. Yes, reserves and fund balance are the same thing.
Okay. All right, and, and we'll have a better chance to look at this, uh, as we go forward for the, the next round on, on, uh, for the next meeting, on the final, on the final budget. But, uh, it's starting to make, it's, it's, it looks like a, I think, a really good budget for, um, where we've been and, and like as Kyle stated earlier in the period, despite all of what's been going on with other cities, having to draw down, uh, I, I know that some of the larger cities got hit pretty hard with their, uh, employees and having to lay people off. Well, we haven't done that and that's what brought up actually brought up local staffing, so. Good job. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Councilmember Wilson. Uh, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. Um, I really liked that presentation. It was thorough and straightforward and easy to understand. And so thank you, uh, Cheryl and Kyle. I was gonna ask about the analyst position, but Frank beat me to it. So that is all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garns. Uh, a comment and then possibly a couple of questions after that. It, it's, uh, it's a great budget. It, uh, allows us to do almost a million and a half work dollars worth of capital project. And yet only draw down our reserves about a half million. So we're using nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, out of revenue to do capital projects. And that's extremely healthy. Uh, I, I, if, if we had to vote today on the budget, I would vote for approval. It's, uh, it's solid. Uh, my two questions, one Kyle raised about the Department of Finance and populations. Uh, if I might ask, what is the current population of Riedel?
So I'm hoping that Cheryl has that spreadsheet because I did not bring it with me.
I don't think I have it either. I want to say three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine, but honestly, I'm I can put it in, I can put it in your guys' boxes or email it to you. And I was wondering, I was wondering if it was the Danco project.
Okay.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, so Department of Finance calculates population numbers differently than, say, um, the, the census. So it's, um, you know, so their, their methodology is a little bit different.
Yeah. Okay, and, and really my only question, uh, has to do with capital. And it was the fifteen thousand dollars for wastewater for a boiler replacement. What, what's that about? I, I probably shouldn't know, but.
But hopefully Derek is on the line, could talk about the boiler.
Yeah, um, we, we just put money aside for, uh, uh, the boiler maintenance and our, our biosolids, our solid handling. Really what we set that money aside for due to its, its, its size and, uh, our, our, our planned repairs. Uh, we're, we're gonna have a boiler company come in and do some annual repairs, and that's gonna run about thirteen thousand. And we just basically had some, uh, uh, problems with the dryer unit itself over the past couple of years. So we're just gonna have some extra people come through and make sure that everything is sound and that we can continue to run it, um, as prescribed.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor Garns.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And, um, my question is actually, I've been answered as well. Thank you, um, for all the work you've done. It's really a really good, solid budget. The only question is kind of not, it, it's budget-related because it has to do with the Dinsmore, um, plateau and, and bringing the water up. And is, is the drought, it is kind of, so it's kind of off-subject, but kind of on-subject. Is the drought going to affect, um, uh, the not so much the ability to, to make it, uh, to get the water up there, but, um, because of the drought and because of our position with Scotia, is it going to somehow end up being more costly because we're gonna have to, um, do anything in addition because of the drought?
Uh, so right now we are, uh, researching that. That is a, uh, hot topic right now is in terms of the impact. It really, we're not gonna know until an executive order from the, the governor comes down, uh, or from the state water board. Uh, but we are in the process of trying to retain some experts, consultants to help us, uh, manage this. As the council recalls, it was two thousand fourteen that the city, uh, was, uh, curtailed. Uh, and so we're looking at that in, in terms of, uh, of, uh, you know, what we were forced to do, which was fifty gallons per person per day residential restriction. Uh, but agricultural uses are a little bit, and so that is something that we are, are looking into.
Okay, thank you. Um, and again, thank, thank you, Cheryl. Really good job. Thank you, Kyle, and all the staff, because I know everybody has to put input their own departments information. And you kind of have to work as a team to be able to bring this to us and to be able to bring it to us and, and be so clear about it. And, and, um, just on, it's, it's really appreciated and it's impressive and, and, and thank you very much. Are there any, um, emails or hands raised for, um, from the public who would like to speak to this?
Currently no hands raised.
And there are no emails.
Okay, and I, I noticed the, the number has been put up for a while. So I, I'm gonna believe that, that, that we've been good. I don't know, um, uh, City Manager, if you want me to go ahead with, um, a motion or if we, we, we want to go ahead and get the final. I think, you know, you want to bring the final, um, budget to us at the next meeting, and then we would move to adopt it then.
Yeah, so what, I think what we'd like to do is, uh, our next agenda item is the priority setting session. Um, so that's not locked in stone. What we'd like to do is revisit that with the council, see if there's any changes in the priorities or any further direction. Uh, we would then make any other amendments, uh, to the budget and, and present it again for final adoption at our first meeting in June, which is, uh, June, uh, June first. Uh, and then there's also another option to kick the final adoption to June fifteenth. So that's, I think, uh, would be the plan. So there is, uh, unless there's any other direction that the council wants to give in terms of the formulation of the budget, um, any other priorities that the council members want to, uh, wanna highlight, then, uh, that, that would be the plan to go through the, uh, priority setting and then return to the council.
Okay, thank you. Then we will, um, close this discussion up on the budget and we will move on to the final item on our agenda. The discussion and possible adoption of, uh, the priorities for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garns, members of the councils. This item is on page sixty-four of, of your packet. So in the, uh, in the agenda summary, we did our best to try to summarize the, the council's direction, um, in the, in the meeting. So towards the top of the agenda on page sixty-four, uh, you'll see that the recommended action for the council is to, uh, approve or amend the FY twenty-one, twenty-two priorities. And so in the, uh, process of, uh, our, our meeting, uh, last, uh, our last council meeting, the, the council individually identified five, uh, different topics. And then what we tried to do was collate that into the, into the list under the recommended actions. So that, uh, includes economic development, that's not related to cannabis, uh, cannabis expansion, uh, which, uh, is part of economic development, staff turnover reduction, code enforcement, and SB thirteen eighty-three, which is related to, uh, mandatory organics recycling and regulations uh, from the state of California that are, uh, uh, scheduled to impact, uh, Riedel over the next few years. Um, so with that, I won't, uh, 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 extend the conversation or the, the presentation much longer. Uh, but we're looking for additional input to the, from the council if there is. Uh, otherwise we would, uh, set the, set the priorities as, uh, as listed on page sixty-four, at the top of page sixty-four.
Thank you, City Manager. My, make sure, yes, I am not muted. Okay, so thank you, City Manager. Uh, one thing, yeah, I, I spoke with the City Manager, um, earlier this week, well, had it been yesterday then. And, um, one of the things I was, uh, wondering about is, is the priority of staff turnover reduction. And it's very important to me and to the entire council to have, uh, less turnover in the staff. I put to him though that he, you know, he's our priority and, and then his staff is his priority. And I just wanted the rest of the council to think about, um, if, if staff turnover reduction and staff that's listening, you know that I am all about staff. Okay, I'm all about doing everything I can for staff. But is that something that, you know, we've done the salary study last year. We, we implemented the full study. And so from a council perspective, I don't know that there's much that we as the council can do. So I didn't know if that's, um, and, and this is more the discussion, I guess, for the council, whether or not that should be a council priority or if we should, you know, there are other, there were other things in here that were on the, on the different various lists. Um, if we should look at something else and, and, you know, put that as a council priority as staff belongs to the city manager, which then would be his priority. So I just wanted to put that out there so everyone could kind of think about that while we're going over this, uh, this, um, priority session. So I will then now jump to Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor Garns. Um, I take your point, uh, for what you just said. I, I, I do, um, you know, I value staff and they're a critical part of the infrastructure of the city and, and all that stuff. But I, I see what you mean about, um, council versus like city manager priorities. Um, so I, I generally stand by mostly, you know, what I said last time. But, um, I am open to hearing what you and other people maybe have to say on that. I definitely understand where you're coming from. Um, so that's, that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garns. I, I remember back a few years ago when, uh, uh, our police department consisted of the chief and the sergeant. And really that affects the council because it affects everybody in the city of Riedel. And it's with that memory in mind that, uh, I put it as my number three priority to retain the quality staff, whatever it pretty much takes to keep quality people working for the city of Riedel. Thank you, Mayor Garns.
Thank you. And, um, Councilmember, well, um, Woodall?
Um, I agree with you, Deborah. Um, we made a big jump, I mean, a push to help our staff by doing the, um, salary study and implementing it. And, um, I think, I think that would reduce the step about in do, having that staff turnover reduction for this year. I think we took a, a big jump toward it last year and maybe some of the other things should move up on the list. So I agree with you.
Okay, thank you. And, um, no other comments about any other things in there?
Oh, uh, you want, or we're
No, I just, I just thought if anyone, you know, as you were, I, I, I wasn't trying to limit it to that. I, now, as I've heard the now three people, I'm like, oh no. I, I didn't mean to limit the conversation. So if there was anything else, you know, I was just, so, um, but that's, that's good. I will, thank you. I will move on to Councilmember Wilson then.
It's important that I comment on, uh, staff turnover because everybody else did, so I gotta make a comment there. Um, I, I think that we, we brought it to a full staff and the, the council primarily says, yeah, spend, this is where you spend your money and that's where the priorities get set. So we spend money on, on those items. The, the budget has a twenty, I think it's twenty thousand dollars is one number, plus ten thousand for, uh, staff, a consultant or somebody to come in and work with the staff and talk to them and, and, you know, as a precursor to negotiations. And then also ten thousand on, uh, police recruitment. So there's, that's a significant, um, I think, show, a show of, um, that we're, that we're still wanting to move ahead with securing our staff. So it's one thing to bring it up to a point of getting it stabilized, it's another thing to, um, keep it steady. and 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 not have it go back the other way that we brought it up. So I still, I would like to see it stay on there and continue with the the stabilizing that so become so it becomes solid and it's not sporadic or it doesn't go up or down. The uh and and just so many ways where the staff is consistent and fully staffed, it 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 takes away, you know, so people can get vacations. Uh they can cross cover, train, um and supply the services that we were lacking sometimes in the city. So I'm I'm good with the current structure or the priorities as they stand.
Okay, well, you know, and I I'm a team player, whatever, you know, what whatever the majority wants, um that that's good. I just I just wanted to bring that to the attention because I think because I don't know what else we can do. I we've done, we as a council have literally done what we as a council can do. Um we've we've put the money there, we've provided you know, the things they've asked, the staff has asked for, and you um just uh listed the the things in the budget that are going to the dollars that are in the budget to do uh even more. So um I'm if that's, you know, if that's the majority's will, I'm not gonna argue about it. I just wanted every I just am trying to be clear that it's not that I'm against that, that that would be crazy. It's that I just can't figure out as a council what more we can do to support staff reduction any more than what we've done. So that was my, that was where I was coming from. Um but the um the list that's here, it's a good list. It's it's a great list. Um and you know, hopefully, when I spoke with the city manager, there was also the the fact that a lot of things fall under di- economic development. Um like, we talked about the Todd property. Well, that kind of falls under economic development, so that could be something they could pursue. Um so their infrastructure, that's something, you know, that we, I think, is really, really important, that, in my opinion, could actually be on on the um on the priority list versus staff turnover because for the reasons I've given. But um I'm I'm good. I don't I don't wanna, you know, we're we're a team, we're finally a team, we're we're trying to work together. And um if if the majority wants that to stay on there, then then it should stay on there. Um and I just hope, though, that those other things that we listed, like the Todd property and infrastructure, somehow fall under like a subcategory of economic development or um uh and and we can, we can um work on those things too and and put some of our focus on those on those things because I think those um would do it it would do a lot for the city if we had a piece of property that we could actually do something on. We could actually do, we talked about City Hall. Uh the 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 building itself, you know, if we had property that we could actually build a new city hall or or expand a city hall, that kind of thing. So, you know, hopefully, we just keep that in mind and we um we um move forward um with little incremental things that aren't quite on the priority list but are still priorities. So with that, I will ask, um are there any more council questions or statements that need to be made?
Yes, I'd like to make them.
Uh go ahead.
Okay, um I was looking at the um SB thirteen eighty three. We we don't have to come up with that as soon as some of the other areas did. So I felt like that wasn't as much of a priority. I mean, we can work at it slowly. I don't think we have to come up with it. We can also see what some of the other entities are doing with it. Um I think the Todd property, me, would be more important than SB thirteen eighty three. Not that it's not important, but I think that being as we don't have ours as soon as some of the other cities do, that we could take time on that. Then on the um what we have a lot of um things for um economic development, economic development, but under the um action plan um that when I said I wanted to do economic development, then I tried to list some of the things that were actually under the action plan that we have for that. And um on our list up here, it says economic development, non-cannabis. So I'm wondering why we put non-cannabis under it. Is it that was a question because that was under the um developed um the immediate action plan. So I was wondering that one and um because cannabis has been bringing in a lot of money and um as we've seen and looked going over the budget, and I think it would be important to have that up on the list also at a higher rate. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Kyle, do you wanna, I I I I think the um
So I I think the uh the differentiation between uh you know, non-cannabis economic development was was really just a judgment call based on the um based on the input because the council members is very clear uh throughout all the the uh uh pri- individual priorities of the council that it was related to economic development. Um and so uh we just kind of wanted to parse that out because there's kind of two two angles on it. The Todd property uh would, I I don't believe would be zoned for any uh cannabis-related activities. So it would, so that was the idea is to pull off economic development, non-cannabis, the immediate action plan, uh which four of the five elements uh are not related to cannabis. And just to just to try to to parse them out, um uh so certainly just generalized economic development would include cannabis, would include a lot of a lot of activities, uh including the Todd property.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and I would add, I'm I'm hoping that we'll have an update soon on uh for the council on on the Todd property. We have made contact with the owner. Uh we have been uh consulting with uh some consultants about potential options. And then, of course, the city is waiting currently for an agreement uh from the state of California to for for the LEAP grant program. The council may recall uh that you authorized us to move forward with pre-permitting, pre-designing uh development, mixed-use commercial residential development on several parcels in the city, one of those being the Todd property.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any other statements or questions from other council members?
I could speak up again. This is So I I liked what you were saying about infrastructure. Obviously, infrastructure is super important. Um I just wanted to bring up like underground infrastructure and make sure that's like part of um, you know, how we're using the word. I sometimes get freaked out that we have this really old, you know, underground infrastructure system and you know, we'll add all these new businesses and get all this lovely stuff happening in Ria Del and then the toilets won't flush. Um so I just, you know, as we add people, we we add waste, you you know, just matters also, you know. So that's, I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could, through the mayor, if I could jump in on that. Council member Carter brings up an excellent point regarding just the the general infrastructure to allow for development. That has been a huge focus of the city. Uh even uh uh pre proceeding my time with the city. Um you know, the wastewater treatment plant uh was necessitated by the state because of a a cease and desist order that prevented uh larger developments from occurring, you know, based on the old plant and the problems associated with it. So the city made a very, you know, significant investment in infrastructure related to wastewater uh to handle new development. So the cities uh in terms of infill development uh is in a really excellent position. Um that I think probably one of the larger challenges with any kind of new development is actually going to be related to stormwater. Um and, you know, uh just flooding because we get, you know, the ground here is is very, gets saturated very quickly. And you have a lot of runoff issues and a lot of rain. Uh but in terms of our water and our our wastewater infrastructure, the plants themselves are are top-notch. Uh the collection system needs work, which we're working on. Uh but in that particular zone of the Todd property, um that's not where we're seeing our largest problems related to ionized and 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 overflow. So so that particular property, there are solutions uh to any of those type of hurdles.
Okay, thank you. I guess it was just some of these, the the, like you said, the stormwater and the overflows and I know there's a section of pipe, we, I think we talked about it at a previous meeting, that like the angle's off and it packs up every single time. And so just anyway, I just, I wanted to make sure that as we talk about infrastructure, we don't just mean above-ground infrastructure. And and so thank you, Kyle, for clarifying. I'm I'm glad to know we're in a in a good position. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Carter. Um so um before we um determine whether or not we want to go with this list, if we want to change anything on this list, well, I guess I should just ask is not in a voting way, but is there anything that uh council member wants to um is move, change, adjust, um where um uh city manager, you would put the Todd property then under economic development, non-cannabis, yes?
So yeah, the way uh uh yeah, economic development, non-cannabis would include basically essentially the the immediate action plan.
Okay.
Encompass beautification, would encompass um the Todd property would encompass uh developing the relationship with the third-party economic development contractors to help provide information to the council, to the public, investors. All those those kinds of of items.
Okay. And what is uh the staff's um position as far as uh thirteen eighty three? Um is that we we it was brought up at least by three people, so that's how it got on the list, I'm sure. But um what do you think on that, city manager?
Uh so thirteen eighty three is uh you know, is is a wise choice uh of priorities. Um the city has the luxury of having um the at least two to four years of extensions uh that we have to file for uh with uh uh CalRecycle, the state's regulatory agency. Um but in reality, two to four years down the road is a very short time for a small organization uh to put something together. And the uh the potential developments in Fortuna and with Recology, Eel River, uh our our solid waste franchise hauler, uh potentially make it uh cheaper and more effective for us to join uh in that effort earlier as opposed to later, because then we're joining into something that's already been worked out and it's years down the road that we would be sort of trying to uh to participate uh in in the solution. So ultimately, that's a council decision. Uh but what uh what staff, uh I think what what we would recommend is trying to put the council in that position of being able to do early adoption of mandatory organic recycling uh be because of those efficiency uh items and not to just rely on the the two-year extension for some of these uh smaller uh uh organizations.
And the extensions are guaranteed. It's just you would have to make application, correct?
Uh they're not, there's really no guarantee when it comes to CalRecycle. So um uh they move the targets constantly. When they don't meet their statewide targets, they'll they'll ratchet down the regulations. Um we've seen that with mandatory commercial recycling um uh and whatnot. They don't meet certain targets and then suddenly they up that up the ante. Um so the only one that I'm aware of is the next two-year extension. Um uh yeah, beyond that, I I really can't guarantee that we would we would receive anything. So it's it typically, it's better to try to proactively address these things than suddenly hit a deadline and be forced into a situation where we have to negotiate with our franchise hauler uh with very few cards to play. So
Thank you. And um so I think answered all the questions. Are there any hands raised or emails?
There is currently one hand raised. Uh Cheryl seems to want to say something.
Have at it. Go for it.
I I just wanted to say that I've been monitoring the May revise from the state of California. And they've actually put some money in there for implementation of the organics waste program. And so it might be a good time to to maybe take advantage of that while that funding's available because I don't think it'll be around for long. Just a comment.
Oh, that's a good comment. Thank you. Okay, so um if there are no other hands raised or emails and and no further questions from from council, um does anyone want to make a motion to approve or amend the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two priorities?
Uh Mayor Garance, I would move that we adopt the twenty twenty one fiscal year priorities.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
And Mayor Garance, may I just jump in real quick? Just to clarify, the motion that uh council member Johnson made was to uh approve them as uh as written in the uh on page sixty four of your packet.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Uh um roll call, please.
Council member Carter?
Yes.
Council member Wilson?
Yes.
Council member Woodall? Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes, motion carries five zero. And now we will move to council reports.
As point of order, Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Um do you have an item to add to the agenda and list an item? Are you going to add an item on the agenda?
On tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Oh, I I think that you and I spoke about yesterday and you gave me a motion, I think, um
Yes.
The manager uh told me that that wasn't um going to happen.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. My apologies.
Karen, which
Pardon me?
Karen, I've forgotten which are, what are you referring to?
For the change order, to approve the change order? For the streets project?
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's
Okay, all right, just for clarification, want to make sure.
Okay, thank you, um Karen. Um so, okay, now we will, we will move on to council reports. Mayor Pro Tim John uh Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Um nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Wilson?
Uh just, I have a subcommittee meeting tomorrow with, I mentioned earlier today, RCA on their on their and that's that's all.
Council member Woodall?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Carter?
Thank you. Um I didn't have any meetings, but I just wanted to say that I did stop by Element Seven uh before I left town and spoke to Christopher Bloom, and it is looking really good in there. And he seems like a nice guy and um to have the community's best interests at heart and all that good stuff. So um I'm planning to go to the grand opening and support the business. Anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And um one is the um the announcement that Element Seven is having their grand opening ribbon cutting on ribbon cutting on Friday, the twenty-first and Saturday, the twenty-second. They'll have events and, and a taco truck and, and so if you have time to stop by, stop by and, and just say hi and, and welcome them here to Ria Del. And the other is the League of, well, pardon me, CalCities is is having our division meeting, the Redwood Empire Division meeting is this Friday at one PM. And if anyone wants to join in, it's on, it'll be a Zoom in meeting and you can just let me know. I'll send you the information. Senator McGuire is going to be there and Assemblyman Huffman will be there. And so you can ask any, you know, they're, they're going to kind of give us updates and, and if there's any questions that you want to ask, of course, you can ask them at that time. So that will be Friday at one o'clock. I will send anyone information that needs the information. Don't forget what the City Manager told us that Senator McGuire is going to have a town hall on Thursday, six thirty, City Manager? Okay, and so if you want to get in on that, what did you say? It was going to be senate.ca.gov or the number six six nine nine zero 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 six eight three three, if you want to participate in that. I think it might be very, I hope it'll be very informative what's coming down the pike as far as the drought. So I think that's all I have. And I think now if we have a motion, we can adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Carter.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The meeting is adjourned until our next regular meeting on June first, twenty twenty-one. Thank everybody for being here and anyone who was watching. Take care. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.